Good evening, folks. I'm Sue Hodgins, the Chair of the Southports Planning Board. It is 6:00 PM and I'm calling our July 2025 regular meeting to order. I ask that everyone silence or turn off your cell phones, please. As we always do, we'll start with those who can and will. Please stand for an invocation and we'll follow with our allegiance to country and flag. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight without flowery words. You know our hearts. You know the will that we have, the commitment that we have for our beautiful town. We pray that you'll give us the words to say, the actions to take, to always take care of it. We pray for our families, Lord, for their safekeeping. We pray for our military. We pray for our first responders. We pray for our allies around the world, Lord, that you would take care of our country and those who want to take care of us. Father, we ask all these things in your precious name and awaiting the return of our Savior and Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. We will move on with tonight's agenda now.
Yeah. Madam Chairman, I make a motion to amend.
You need to hit your button.
Sorry.
Sorry. I make a motion to amend the agenda.
In what way, sir?
With the understanding of our new members that are going to be sworn in tonight, I'd ask that we put that after public comment.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Any discussion, further discussion on it? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you so much. Motion passes unanimously and we will adjust our agenda accordingly. So now, item D then would become the approval of the May 15, 2025 minutes. Members, well, most of the members were issued the drafted minutes from the May 15 meeting in advance of this meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? I actually have a couple. On page three, paragraph three, please revise that second sentence for the maximum number of units for Waterway. Is that meant to be, Mo, 199 residential? Is that supposed to be for just the Marina area or for everything? It's a little confusing the way it's written.
Okay.
That's for the Marina area.
Okay. But it talks about different housing types, I guess, including small lot, single family, duplex, town home, and multifamily. So that is for the Marina area itself?
Let me take a look at the minutes for a moment.
Okay. I just thought it might be nice to get put in there what is the number of total residential units being discussed for the entire community, since this paragraph points out the Waterway community. While you're looking at that, Mo, the other two things that I had on page four, in the very first sentence, we need to remove that S from that sentence so it would read Mr. Ashley read the consistency statement, not reads the consistency statement. And then on page six, where the exemptions are shown as quote "listed" at the bottom of page two and on page three of the letter, are those exemptions supposed to be those items listed under that? Specialized Events Text Amendment? Or was there something different that was supposed to be shown there? It's very confusing.
I'm sorry, which page was that again?
The last one is on page six. Tori, where it talks about, let's see, one, two, three. The fourth paragraph down, these exemptions listed at the bottom of page two and on page three of the letter include, and then it starts talking about Specialized Events Text Amendment. I'm not sure that that's what was supposed to be the inclusions that were there. And then, Mo, do you have off the top of your head just the maximum number for Waterway, just so we can?
So, yes, so that's going to be 1389 was the total. So it's 1190 for the county and then the 199.
Okay. But you can see from the way that that was written with it just talking about Waterway community in general, that it looked a little confusing to not have the total number in there. So thank you for that. Appreciate that, those changes. So is it the board's pleasure to table approval of these minutes until your August meeting to see these corrections? Or is the board content with staff's commitments to the corrections noted here for a motion to approve those May 15 minutes as drafted?
Madam Chairman, I'm content. I have belief that Mo and her staff will make the correct changes.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any final discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. That motion passes unanimously. And then, I think it's still, we're talking about this May minute. Is there any update to the recording for the board's May meeting, Cheyenne, the one that went out in cyberspace?
That was a glitch on the Microsoft end.
And with the other members of the committee, I would like to make a few comments about what has occurred and certain statements that have been made about the planning board that had the last two Board of Aldermen meetings. There were a number of misstatements of fact and improper innuendos that went to the credibility and the conduct of what this planning board has done over the last year. Now, I'm usually not political. I believe our position is one of doing what's best for the citizenry of this community, but I feel compelled to address these concerns because it does deal with the integrity of the planning board. We have been complimented for the yeoman's job we have done in the last year with everything from site plans to setbacks to the sign ordinances, the lighting ordinances. Everyone on this board has done incredible work and put in extensive hours in making recommendations to the Board of Aldermen. So please, as I go through these, what I call corrective statements, they're not intended as a political statement in any manner, shape, or form, but rather corrective action for the members of this committee. Now, our good mayor has said that transparency and no adversarial relationship is key. And unfortunately, after these two meetings, I wonder if these words used are simply, and I hate to use the phrase, empty vessels, because I believe they are. During the last meeting, he accused the planning board of endless deliberations, that somehow we had punitive meetings with regard to one landowner. And this was an improper criticism of the board. In that particular, I'll call it land use issue, that particular landowner had filed a site plan. The city asked him to file an amended site plan. That was done not by us, but by the planning department. While that was pending, that gentleman went forth with the Board of Adjustments and asked for a variance in order that cars could back out onto Hal Street. That hearing was held in January of 2024. The Board of Adjustments rendered the decision granting a variance under the UDO. For a variance to become final, that the chairman of the Board of Adjustment has to sign it and has to be filed with the clerk of the Board of Adjustments before it's effective. That was not done till August of '24, eight months later. So to say that the board, this board did not act on something when in fact the variance that would be part of what we had to do was not even complete is improper. And because of the lack of safety evidence with regard to traffic backing out, we did go to the landowner and had two meetings. I don't believe they were punitive in nature. We met with he and his attorney. I was present. We had gone to the North Carolina Department of Transportation and said, "Do you have a reasonable alternative?" One was suggested. We then presented that to the landowner and his attorney. And we said, "Besides that, add some green space if you would be so kind." He said, "I won't do that," but he liked the alternative as far as what the North Carolina Department of Transportation engineer had said. So that gentleman filed for a second variance. And that was not heard until January of '25 and was denied. Thence this, once that was completed, it became, came back before the board and it was acted upon. So to say there were punitive meetings and endless deliberation is obfuscating the facts and simply not true. The second issue, and this one I have trouble understanding. We, everyone here is familiar with the Waterway project and the ZZ zoning and how it came up before. And in fact, in the first time around, Mo's office with Travis Henley did a remarkable job in drafting the documents. It was superb in every manner, shape, and form. But it was denied. So now it's come up again and it came before us. And because of the complexity and the seriousness of a project that's going to add, as you've heard tonight, over 1,200, 1,300 homes, we did ask for an attorney to consult. And it was the first time we had done it. And we were told no, that it wasn't a good use of funds. And I know when our chairman brought that up at a Board of Aldermen meeting that occurred on a Monday, the mayor said, "No, that never occurred." And then he realized it had. And quite frankly, anyone of political decorum would have simply said, "You know what? I made a mistake. I didn't remember that, but I'll look into it." Instead, there were statements made that were quite non-understandable because we weren't just asking, there were three components to that development, that Waterway project. The overlay, the text amendment, and a developer's agreement. So we said, "Hey, this is complex. We've been given everything to look at." And we were told, "Well, basically, don't change anything. Just look at it. It's pretty much a done deal." We don't work that way. We're going to look at everything. And the mayor at the last Board of Aldermen meeting, after there was comments and some critiquing by our chairman, came back and said that there were two North Carolina statutes that established that the planning board did not have standing to look at the development agreement. Well, one, the reasonable one attorney, was not for just a development agreement, but for all three items. So once again, that's a misstatement. Secondly, I reviewed the statutes. And the statutes do not say what the mayor said. He says that they say that the planning board does not have any standing whatsoever to look at a developer's agreement. And quite frankly, that's false. In fact, I don't want to say false, it's a misstatement of fact. The two statutes, one of section 160D's, 1003 and 1005, 1005 just deals with that the Board of Aldermen has to have certain legislative hearings and the way they have to process and to be ordered to enter into a developer's agreement. And section 105, well, and in 103, it establishes procedures, how they're supposed to do it. Well, in 103 Part B, the statute says that the developer's agreement may be considered concurrently with a zoning map or text amendment affecting the property in development. That doesn't sound like we don't have standing, because if you look at the definition of what powers the planning board has, look at section 2 colon 3, A5 of the UDO. "The planning board reviews and recommends to the Board of Aldermen proposals for any zoning map or text amendments." So if you compare those two, we do have standing to look at things. Now, if they were simply doing just a developer's agreement, no, we would not see it at all. And to buttress this, there is a gentleman at the University of North Carolina School of Government, David Owens. He's very well-known in the state of North Carolina. And in one of his journal articles where he was having a dissertation on what is a developer's agreement, the pros and cons and pitfalls, he made this, he made this statement. "If there is a rezoning associated with a development agreement," and this is often the case, "the rezoning must go, must go to the planning board prior to governing board's consideration. It would be prudent in these situations to concurrently secure a planning board comment on a proposed development agreement." So again, it was an unnecessary criticism and unfounded and a misstatement of the applicable law. In fact, when the land use attorney was talking about it at the meeting, he went out of his way and made a comment that complimented the planning board that we had made a catch and it was a good job that it had been missed. And this had to do with the annexation provisions. And this is something that the mayor and another board member had negotiated and had failed to notice the danger in allowing it to remain drafted as it was. And the planning board is the one that pointed it out, and this was acknowledged by the attorney. And one of the last things, and this is really what caused me to go on this statement, which is unusual for me, the mayor said that there were about five potential issues that could have cost the city high dollar in legal fees and lawsuits referencing conduct of the planning board. One, what is the term potential issue? That's like being potentially elected. What does that mean? We deal in actual issues, not potential issues. That has no meaning. So if there is something that was, well, a critical matter for the city, then the planning board should have been advised of it. Never will be contacted by the planning, the planning department, the mayor, any liaison, liaison for the mayor. And so with this, and when you talk about legal matters, I have a small background in that. Prior to retiring, I was a trial lawyer for 40 years, recognized Best Lawyers of America, Northern Virginia Magazine, Washingtonian Magazine, you name it, and inducted into the Virginia Trial Lawyer Hall of Fame. So when someone says there's a legal issue, tell me what it is. And if you think I had something to do with it, come to me. Tell me what that is. And in this particular case, I would ask that anyone on behalf of the mayor's office or the Board of Aldermen, if there is these so-called actual issues and not just innuendo and criticisms, I would ask that provide me the documentation, emails, letters, any correspondence, any document of any type for me to review to determine, did this planning board do anything that was improper? And I'd ask that that be done within the next 30 days. And I assume if we don't see it, it doesn't exist. And the last insult was saying that we need, that he is personally going to ask the Board of Aldermen to appoint an attorney to review everything we do. Is that in response because of criticisms he had taken and public comment by our chairman? Why say that? The city, the city has a city attorney that reviews every agenda packet that goes to the Board of Aldermen. And that includes any action by the planning board. So why would that even be necessary? Why would you mention that? But for, well, you can determine why. But in conclusion, I don't believe in half-truths, disingenuous statements, and you certainly don't impute a board of volunteers that works hard. And I, I'll, I'll fight, as I say, I'll go down biting someone's ankles if it comes to defending what this board has done, because this board is special, talented, and sincere in their efforts. So let's mean what you say. When you say transparency and not adversarial, don't subvert those terminologies by actual conduct. Thank you.
Adding on to what Kevin was saying, it raised my alarms. I happen to look at the mayor's Facebook page. And one of the things that stood out was, "Concern is not based on political opinion, but on the repeated assessment of legal counsel and subject matter experts." When somebody says repeated, that means ongoing, which means it didn't just happen one night or two nights. It means over a long period of time. So I was very concerned that perhaps this board was maybe missing something. And I really would like to know, as Kevin said, from the mayor, what those five instances were. One night it was two, and as Paige just said, five. So is it two or is it five? On the upside, we're doing training tonight. I'm sure the mayor is watching. Hopefully, he'll pay close attention and maybe he might learn a little bit about the planning board. But I am, I want to make sure that this, that this didn't happen. If it was repeated, why weren't we told by the mayor? Why weren't we told by our board liaisons? Our city staff certainly would have brought it to our attention. So I find that just, you know, it just, just knock it off. You know, that's what it really comes down to. So that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Any other comments from any planning board member while we're allowing those right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, John.
I guess I, I'm disappointed with how the process has gone on the last couple of weeks, but I do want to thank Sue. At least personally, I'm a new member and the 2025 people had a lot of digging to do, a lot of catch-up to do. So we were looking at work done by previous boards. And the information was always available, it was always organized, and it seemed to be accurate with the process that, at least my understanding, that the planning board needs to go through. And I will give Sue the lion's share of recognition for that. And, you know, we're going to welcome new board members. We're going to move on. But I'm sure that we'll still be operating under the principles that you set out for us. So again, thank you.
Thank you, John. I appreciate that. Anyone else? Fred?
Sue, I just wanted to thank you for your contributions to our board. You are the most informed person sitting here. We're going to feel your loss. I'm disappointed you're not going to be on this side of the table. I know you'll be on that side of the table. And we look forward to seeing you in the future.
Thank you, Fred. I appreciate that.
Just, while the accolades are going around, thank you. I think you run one heck of a meeting. And I've been through, I don't know how many different boards and committees in my lifetime. And I would say that you run the best meeting I've ever, ever attended, whether it's on that side of the table or this side of the table, and I think always well-organized. You know your stuff. I mean, you really do. And I appreciate everything you've done to help guide us along, especially those of us that are new or newer, or even for those that have been around for a while. I think it's, you've helped a great deal and you are certainly going to be missed a great deal. Thank you. And I hope that we can call you along the way.
Absolutely. Y'all know where to find me. Thank you. Gentlemen, I appreciate that so much.
Sue, may I have just a quick word?
Absolutely.
Bob? Thank you. Besides just saying thank you for everything that you've done, I just want to make the statement that I believe that our current Board of Aldermen has done a tremendous disservice to this community by not reappointing Sue. And that can go on the record. But I want to just tell you how much I appreciate you and the way you run things and the way you're organized and have the courage to stand up and ask for accountability when it's needed. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. I do have a comment that I want to get into the record tonight, if we can, please. "The Southport Planning Board has validity. In Article 2.3 of the UDO, you can see that the planning board is responsible for an understanding of trends, past and present, recommending orderly development as it relates to the comprehensive plan, understanding and recommending changes to the city zoning map, reviewing and recommending approval or denial to the mayor, excuse me, to the alderman of any major subdivision preliminary and final plat, being the final say on major site plans, determining whether proposals conform to the city's principles in the comp plan for growth and improvement of the area, and keeping the alderman and the public informed and advised as to all these matters." The board is also tasked to review and recommend changes to the alderman regarding city property our current Board of Alderman has done a tremendous disservice to this community by not reappointing Sue. And that can go on the record. But I want to just tell you how much I appreciate you and the way you run things and the way you're organized. And have the courage to stand up and ask for accountability when it's needed. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. I, I do have a comment that I want to get into the record tonight if we can, please. The Southport Planning Board has validity. In Article 2.3 of the U D O, you can see that the Planning Board is responsible for an understanding of trends, past and present, recommending orderly development as it relates to the comprehensive plan, understanding and recommending changes to the city zoning map, reviewing and recommending approval or denial to the mayor, excuse me, to the Alderman of any major subdivision preliminary and final plat being the final say on major site plans, determining whether proposals conform to the city's principles in the comp plan for growth and improvement of the area and keeping the Alderman and the public informed and advised as to all these matters. The board is also tasked to review and recommend changes to the Alderman regarding city property usage, acquisition and disposal of public properties. Somebody bar the door. Don't let the new folks run because we already know all of this. It's a lot. The Planning Board is the workhorse for this town's Board of Aldermen and in any other municipality in North Carolina. And all those responsibilities are straight out of the U D O. The job of this board is to take each submission, each assignment, and act on each one with this U D O square in your sights. Not based on who you know, who's contacted you and asked for help as a neighbor or a friend, or who sells, who says they'll contact an attorney if they don't want, get what they want in town. You are not here to do anyone's bidding or to follow any elected's agenda. You take an oath to the U S and North Carolina constitutions and, and to do the best for all of Southport, period. The seats you occupy are some of the hardest and sometimes the hottest seats in town. You get to, or you should get to, know this U D O very well. You've often heard said that the U D O, like all town ordinance, is a living document. As areas are identified that may need change, proposals are presented and part of your job is to discuss and ask sometimes tough questions of applicants, staff and each other. That's another part of this body's job. That's not always a popular one. The new members will soon find that out. There's not one at this table that's not wondered at least once, why the hell they volunteered for this? Let me say congratulations to the new members whom I've met just tonight. Lean on these members that are already sitting here with you. Over the last few years, we've assembled an extremely talented group on this board with diverse backgrounds and real relevant experience. Learned from them, I have. And I appreciate every, appreciate every one of them ever so much. Stand behind each other as board members, but know that, as I stated earlier, you should be able to question each other and staff and be able to communicate freely. If that's not happening, there's something wrong and it'll surface. Try to see to it that you're not part of mistrust that might start brewing. I want to just recount some of the major tasks that have come before this Planning Board in the last few years. Now that Will's gone, Fred and I are all that's left of the board for the original Indigo Two submission. That was a monumental task, but I think it was a great opportunity for us to be part of educating the city about how we should and could work in concert with a developer. That came back around to us again, just recently, but not quite in the same way. We didn't have quite the choices that we could have had. Several developments have been reviewed and recommendations made for the ultimate decisions rendered by the Alderman. I wrote down Indigo Phase Two, the hammocks, Oakton also now known as the Waters, Home Place, Haven, Osprey Landing, Turtle Bay, Southport's tree ordinance, short-term rental restrictions and updates, dimensional standards and residential use standards, bullfrog corner repurposing, car insurance building repurposing, the sign ordinance update, the lighting ordinance update, the original conditional zoning discussion, rights away discussion, comprehensive plan update, review and recommendations, historic preservation guidelines discussion, Cades Cove's gate, bed and breakfasts as event venues, city property usage review, including our historic county courthouse, and most recently, the resurrection of conditional zoning and the approval of its application for former Indigo Two, now Waterway. We also discovered and helped the city understand where processes weren't matching up to best practices. Unfortunately, a submission had one city board pitted against another. The vice chair spoke to this earlier. From this board's concern for best practice and application flow and identifying the issue to one of our liaison, the Alderman looked at the practices and have seen fit to placing safeguards and extra legal eyes and ears to see to the city's best interests regarding submissions to this board and the Board of Adjustment. That was a much needed positive step. We've learned through more than one of these activities and accomplishments listed that you sometimes find out the hard way what things you've not thought out well enough. That will not stop. There will always be developers, builders, professional groups, individuals who will look for that one step ahead that they can take to get around what's the right for the town. When you realize as board members that the city's been had screwed, it stings. But keep working proactively with each other and with staff. I continue to hope that the good work will overcome. I'm proud of the accomplishments of this board and look forward to seeing what's on deck. Southport is changing, no doubt. This board helps stand as a buffer to ensure the changes are for the better. I'll be watching and wishing you all the very best. All right, moving on to item G now, uh, in our agenda, excuse me, amended agenda is the swearing in of our members at this time. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Kevin Lachlan for that to be done. Kevin, the mic and the gavel are yours, sir.
Are you going to do Maria first?
Done this many times.
All right, we're going to proceed with the oath of office. Please raise your right hand and you can either swear or affirm the oath after I read it. I, Maria Horton, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States.
That's a lot.
When I get done, you could say, I swear or I affirm too, but I have read. You don't have to repeat it.
Good.
Gentlemen, take two.
All right, I, Maria Horton, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Southport, North Carolina Planning Board. So help me God.
I swear.
Okay. And if you could define that right here.
Absolutely.
All righty. Okay. Right hand on the Bible and if you'll just swear or affirm after I read.
My, can I raise my right hand or do I need to?
You're going to raise your right hand.
Good, thanks. Thank you.
I, Doug, okay, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Southport, North Carolina Planning Board. So help me God.
I do so swear.
Welcome. And you can just find this for me. Right hand, okay. And you'll just swear or affirm after I read. I, Ed Eckert, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as an alternate member of the Southport, North Carolina Planning Board. So help me God.
I swear.
Welcome.
All righty, the next matter on the agenda will be the appointment of the chair and vice chair. At this time, do I hear any motion to move into that with regards to selection of the chair and vice chair?
I'll make a nomination that Kevin Lockhart be appointed as the chair of the Planning Board.
Is he a member of the board, Lockhart?
Lachlan, excuse me. Him too.
I think there's an Uber waiting.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
I thank you for that, but I respectfully cannot accept it at this time for reasons previously discussed with you. I have a motion in that respect. I would, uh, move that Larry Ashley be appointed designated chair of the Planning Board. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Larry? Welcome as the new chair of the Planning Board. Would ask that you take your seat.
I'll stay right here for now, if you don't mind. Thank you. Hopefully I never have to use these. Thank you all. I appreciate it a great deal. I'll open up the floor for nominations for the selection of the vice chair of the Planning Board.
I'll, I nominate Fred Fiss.
Okay, uh, we have, the floor has been nominated, uh, Fred Fiss has been nominated from the floor as, uh, vice chair of the Planning Board. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion here and none? All in favor of having Fred Fiss as the vice chair of the Plan Board signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So voted? Thank you, Fred. Okay, next up, um, let's see, thank you all. What I'd like to do, I have a feeling that, um, the attorney is on the clock. So I would entertain a motion on the other business to take the planning board training session first. And that way we can do the, um, presentations from, uh, the Planning Services Director and, uh, City Planner afterwards. Could I have that as a motion?
So moved.
Much been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Much been made and second. And, uh, any further discussion? Here and none? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So voted? We are now in training. Thank you. All yours, sir.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Uh, can you guys hear me okay?
We, we can.
Okay, well, congratulations, Mr. Chairman and, and the new members of the Planning Board. For those who don't know me, my name is Brady Herman. I'm the, uh, city attorney for Southport. For those who don't know and are new to the board, you all as the Planning Board also have outside counsel representation. His name is Ray De Sheppi? No, I'm butchering the name and I apologize to Ray. But any, any event, he's outside counselor for both the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Board. And that is not, um, uncommon. I actually not only represent my municipal clients and their boards, but I also act as outside counsel for planning boards and Board of Adjustments. One, for example, is Sanford and, uh, in Lee County, in the central North Carolina. But the reason why I'm doing the presentation is, is again, I, I do these trainings regularly, not only with governing bodies, but planning boards and Board of Adjustments. And I think this might be my third time doing some sort of, um, training for, for this board, the most recently back in February. So for some of you, this might be, um, a bit of, uh, a refresher, I guess. And then for the others that are new to the board, uh, will be completely new material. So I'll, I'll sort of be discussing a lot of broad strokes, uh, for the most part. But I think, uh, what will be beneficial is for you all to feel free to ask any questions throughout my presentation. I, I feel like an open dialogue is very helpful, um, to sort of sort through specific topics in the event that you guys have questions. So with that, I will start my presentation if I can figure out how to share the screen. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, we're going to cover sort of four main topics. I think topic two and three will be the majority of this. But we're going to go into a little bit of how local governments, uh, have the authority and specifically the Planning Board, where that comes from. And then we're going to go into just the, the four main types of land use decisions that are, are related to you all, mostly being an advisory board and as well as a board that, um, uh, reviews certain decisions that are called administrative decisions. And I'll get into a little bit more, uh, with that. And then specifically the role that this board plays in terms of what's delegated by statute and as well as what's in the U D O. And then just briefly cover some other issues in terms of conflict of interest, uh, public records, open meeting laws and, and quorum laws and that type of thing. So, what the, can the, just in sort of broad strokes, what can the Planning Board do? Well, it's whatever the, uh, the state and general assembly say that we can go and do. And so the world that we live in by statute is in chapter 160D. Back right around when COVID was happening, um, there was a huge overhaul by the legislature to incorporate all municipalities and counties to have every land use and development statute into one chapter. Whereas previously they were divided into actually multiple chapters, which made it somewhat confusing. So 160D is going to be a lot of your guide, uh, in terms of your, uh, authority and as well as what guides, you know, myself as a local government attorney and as well as staff. And then the, any sort of court decision, whether it be in appellate court or Supreme Court, that goes and, and, and either interprets the law or provides rulings that might have an impact on you all. And then, um, you know, Kevin mentioned this a little bit in terms of, uh, David Owens, but he was once, uh, I think he was for a long time on the staff, but the, uh, UNC School of Government has great blog posts on every variety of topic in terms of land use and municipal boards. If you go on Google and you type in UNC School of Government blog post and whatever issue you're trying to go and research, it's bound to have some sort of blog post on the topic. And even me being a municipal attorney, it's a lot of times my, my starting place for my research. So, um, so those are some, some good useful guides that I'll discuss a little bit more at the end of my presentation. But as I've mentioned, without you guys volunteering your time to be on this board, you know, any municipality or Southport in particular could not have zoning. All municipalities are required to have a planning board in order to go and have a zoning ordinance. And specifically, everything in the authority that's given to you all is spelled out in section 2.3 of the U D O. So for those that are new, I would highly suggest skimming through, um, you know, that section of the ordinance, which will pertain to a lot of what I will discuss with you all. And I believe Tori, and I meant to mention this, thank you to Cheyenne and Tori and Mo for getting me set up to do this remotely and, and for you guys. and for you guys accommodating me. But I believe that you all were sent a copy of my PowerPoint and as well as maybe a, sort of a basics pamphlet from the UNC School of Government. I hope you guys receive that. But in any event, if you guys need a copy of my presentation to refer to later, feel free to reach out to Tori and Mo and they both have a copy they can go and give you. Okay, so we're going to go and talk about just briefly, sort of four main types of land use decisions. They flow kind of as follows, one being very broad discretion, one having, I would say, some discretion, another type of decision where you have no discretion, and then sort of advisory decisions. So when we talk about legislative decisions, the majority of the time, we're dealing with the governing body here being the Board of Aldermen. And so legislative decisions come typically in two specific cases, whether that being a rezoning, otherwise called a map amendment, or a U D O text amendment. So usually governing bodies are the ones that go and are the ultimate decision makers and very broad discretion to approve or deny their request. I've looked into challenges to legislative decisions, specifically as it pertains to zoning map or text amendments, and they are rarely overturned based on the board's decision. That's, that's the latitude that they're given in these legislative capacities. And I'd also say, one other type of legislative decision that kind of couples in this would be an annexation. Those are classified as legislation as well. And then you have quasi judicial. So this is typically done by the board of adjustment for most municipalities, although I have seen some planning boards have quasi judicial authority given to them. And what that is, is typically, well, it is a miniature court hearing, but what, what in those type of hearings, you know, evidence is presented, witnesses are sworn in, and essentially, facts and evidence are entered into the record and that board goes and base those facts and evidence on a specific standard. And this typically deals with things like variances, appeals of staff, staff decision and special use permits. And then we have what's called administrative decisions, which are based on objective facts and predetermined standards that are set forth in the U D O. And I usually call this the check the box standard. One has no discretion to approve or deny either, for example, what you all go as the final decision maker. Let's take major site plan approval. It either complies with the ordinance or it does not. And a lot of times, staff makes these type of decisions on zoning permits, building permits, minor site plans and some other things. But again, you guys are the final decision maker in terms of major site plan approval, which is a legislate, or excuse me, administrative decision, which I'll, I'll speak to here in a moment. And then, of course, one of your main roles is you are an advisory board. You give recommendations to the Board of Aldermen on every single rezoning, every single text amendment. And you do, you guys also make recommendations on some other things like the land use plan, whenever the city acquires property, the design of property, or excuse me, design of public buildings, which again, I'll get into a little bit more later on in my presentation. But all that is, is delegated to you all in the U D O on some things that are, that I would consider to be not so traditional. But typically, every single planning board in North Carolina is an advisory board on, on zoning map and U D O text amendments. And they're not binding by you all, but they are an opportunity for you to go and make comments and recommendation to the decision making board. And they go and, and take your recommendations quite seriously. So again, without you guys, municipal bodies would not be able to go and hear rezonings. And I actually would otherwise not be able to actually have zoning within the respective jurisdictions. So again, you guys are a board that's created by statute and extremely important to the whole land use and decision making process. I guess I'll pause there. I haven't heard very much, so I'm making sure everybody's, you know, with me. And if anybody has any questions, or I'll, I'll keep rolling through.
Not hearing any yet.
All right.
We'll reserve our right to do that.
Yeah, again, if you guys have questions at the end, you can wait, you can interrupt me. It makes no difference to me. But so let's, let's briefly go through. Again, you all make recommendations on rezonings and U D O text amendments and land use plan. I know that's coming through the pipeline. There's been a lot of work on the land use plan. If Mo is near a microphone, it may be helpful to this board to know when that might be coming to them and just briefly explain sort of the role that they will play if they haven't already. But that's going to be something that's going to be huge for you all in terms of your, your recommending body to the, the Board of Aldermen.
Yes, thank you, Brady. So the, the comprehensive land use plan that is also meets the Coastal Area Management Act, the CAMA land use plan requirements as well. We received our comments back from D C M about two months ago. And we have made all of those updates. We just received it back this week from our consultants. So I will be bringing it back to the, to this board for a recommendation to the Board of Aldermen in August.
Okay, great. And I'll, I'll speak to this when we talk about you all making recommendations on things like rezonings and U D O text amendments. But once that land use plan is adopted.
Brady, if I could, we've got a question here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
I think you're going to answer it, but I have a question. I looked at the draft and I identified the amended 2020 CAMA plan. In the absence of the approved draft plan, is the board responsible for using the amended 2020 CAMA plan? Or should they look to the alignment of the new land use plan that is, that was drafted in February?
Yeah, so you're going to, well, I know Mo will know the answer to this, but I'll, I'll try to answer. And if I'm wrong, though, you tell me. You're, you're, you're look, we're dealing with the land use plan that's currently in effect, not the new one, if that's lack of a better term. I think that's what you're asking, right?
Yes, it is, because one is, one is authorized and one remains in draft. But we have projects that will be moving forward before it may be approved and signed. So I'm asking.
Yeah, so that won't take an effect until it's approved formally by the Board of Aldermen, which I believe is the very last step, I believe. Now, Mo, you correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
Okay. But what's nice about having a brand new land use plan is a lot, as you guys are probably aware, it takes a lot of time in terms of creating one or amending one. And by the time they are created, sometimes after five years, they're already outdated to some degree. So the best sort of scenario for you all is it's going to be, you know, pretty new in the sense of what's actually boots on the ground in terms of growth and a guide for you all in terms of making your advisory decisions. So that's going to be very helpful moving forward, which that should, seems like it's going to be happening, you know, within the next couple of months. Another thing you all make recommendations on is preliminary plaques and also PUDs. PUDs is, is a planned unit development. It's analogous to what I would consider to be conditional zoning. But you guys make recommendations to the Aldermen on those. And you guys are the final decision maker on major site plan applications. And as well as making recommendations on U D O amendments, the land use plan and any other lawful duties that are assigned by the, by the Aldermen. Here's just a brief, some, sorry, here's just a brief outline that's in the U D O showing the R being your recommended body, F D being the final decision maker. I will note that, and as Kevin and Sue kind of spoke to, you know, just recently, we amended the U D O to now allow conditional zoning for residential projects. Because Mo, correct me if I'm wrong, before it was just for commercial for conditional zoning?
That's correct.
Okay, so you all will be seeing more conditional zoning applications coming before you on your time on the board. So just briefly explaining staff's role, you know, they do a lot of the legwork upfront. They're the ones that go and review the applications, talk to the developers and the applicants, seeing if the applicant, or if the applications comply with the U D O requirements. And of course, prepare, you know, staff reports to you all at each meeting and depending on, on what item you guys are, are reviewing or making recommendations on. And then the technical review committee is also involved in making recommendations to the planning board on major site plans, preliminary plaque, conditional zoning and PUDs. And the T R C involvement is at the discretion of the zoning administrator. I will let Mo speak to briefly, briefly, because I just, I'm not in these day to day forums to sort of briefly explain the T R C's role and who exactly is on the T R C.
Yes, so the T R C, the Technical Review Committee, is a committee of state and local and other regional partners. So it usually is the Public Works, our engineer, Division of Coastal Management, Brunswick County, engineering for the water and sewer. We also ask the fire marshal, the fire chief, the police chief and N C D O T to review any site plans that come forward, any subdivisions that come forward, and any other projects that we feel would be, it would be good to have their input prior to moving forward with it. The U D O says that we may have a T R C meeting, but it has become our policy to have a T R C meeting with any major site plan that comes through in any major subdivision.
Sure, thanks, Mo. And most municipalities do have a T R C. And Mo, I think it might be helpful, what stage is a T R C involved? In other words, of course, it goes to staff, you guys do the legwork upfront. And then is it T R C review and then immediately goes to the planning board? You know, through that pipeline? So like, what stage in the process generally is that review done?
Yes, once the, once the application has been deemed complete and it, we have a complete package that we can review and having all of the details that are required, we then take it to the T R C for comment. And any revisions that need to be made to those plans are then taken back to the applicant. And then they bring those changes back to this, if there are changes, back to staff for their further review to ensure that all the comments have been satisfied, and then we will present it to the planning board.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mo, for that. Anybody have any questions so far? All right, here and none. We'll move on to major site plan review, okay? This is where you guys are the final decision makers. It involves kind of these three scenarios. Whenever residential development has four or more dwelling units on a lot, if a non-residential development has 10,000 square feet or more of impervious surface and all other developments not subject to minor site plan review. This comes verbatim from U D O section 2.7B. As we just sort of mentioned, the Mo and the U D O administrator and T R C provide a recommendation to you all on whether the application is complete and whether it is complied with all the requirements in the U D O. And your task in terms of reviewing as the final decision maker is whether that major site plan meets all of the U D O requirements. And if it does, then you got, you all have no discretion to approve or deny. You have to go and approve the site plan submitted, otherwise meets all the standards of the U D O. And that's coming verbatim from the, from the Southport U D O. Any questions on major site plan review? Okay, so Kevin touched on this a little bit, and I thought it would be beneficial for you all to kind of learn from sort of a unique situation that happened, you know, within the last year or two. But, you know, although it's rare, occasionally, a project might come before you all and the Board of Adjustment. And an example of this would be, you know, seeking a variance or an appeal of staff, staff decision that relates to a project that you all would ultimately be the final decision maker on major site plan review. There's nothing unlawful about an applicant going both avenues. I think the hiccup that happened to some degree with that one project was, is in what order? In what order makes the most sense? And that's something that staff and myself are going to go and work on to see if something would be prudent to add to the U D O to clarify, even though I do think it happens in very unique circumstances. But just keep in mind that you all in your administrative decision making for final plat, as well as the Board of Adjustment, in their decision making in a quasi judicial capacity, has its own independent authority per state law in the U D O. So if the Board of Adjustment makes a decision in their quasi judicial capacity, that is akin to a court making it a decision. So just keep in mind that if a variance, let's say, is granted by the Board of Adjustment, that decision is final and that is something that you all as a planning board have to go and accept, whether you like it or not, as it relates to your review on a major site plan. I'll just do an easy example. Let's say someone's seeking a variance from the setback requirements, you know, to the property line or the building or where the building is situated. If the variance is granted by the Board of Adjustment, although without the variance, it would not comply with the U D O, you all would have to go and accept that, that it is in compliance on those objective standards in terms of an administrative decision. I'm going to stop there, see if anybody has any questions, or I'll move on to your all's role in an advisory capacity.
Radius Larry, I do have a question with respect to that instance. If something's going before the Board of Adjustment, that's already before the planning board, I think it would be beneficial for the planning board to be able to put that application on pause until it's completed at the Board of Adjustment, because otherwise, we're running parallel and we're going to start duking it out and not knowing, such is what happened.
Sure.
Yeah, to make sure that, that, and I think having it, having the ability for the planning board to be able to pause it, I think would be the best thing. That way, we can act on the most recent application of that particular proposal.
And that's exactly kind of what, what language we're going to go and look into to see how to best flag that upfront. I think it's rare, rare it gets to a stage where you all are about to go and make a decision and then the applicant says, hold up, you know, I'm going to go to the Board of Adjustment to try to seek a variance. You know, ultimately, I think that's stuff that needs to go and happen, you know, in the ultimate, you know, sort of application phase when staff's going and reviewing. But you can't go and foresee every single scenario. So sometimes it might be a little bit more along the pipeline. But I think just something as simple that, you know, you have to go before the Board of Adjustment, before it actually coming to you all at a meeting, for example.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I have, I have a comment. So part of that is the planning board being informed that, that an applicant is going through the Board of Adjustments. The case that you're referring to vaguely, the planning board was not aware that the applicant was going to the Board of Adjustments. So in the U D O process, maybe that needs to be defined, that, that we need to be kept informed that that is happening.
Yeah, and I don't disagree at all. I, I think, and that's something that actually we were talking about, I think at the last training we did in February about how to go and handle that. I will also say that quasi judicial decisions have, have a lot more notice provisions than some other, like, let's say legislative or that type of thing. So there are ways that the general public, and you guys being a part of the general public, are put on notice. And it involves advertisement, posting the property, sending to adjacent property owners. So, you know, generally speaking, you know, you are put on notice just as a citizen. That's a little bit besides the point. It's you all as a planning board being privy to those things that are happening behind the scenes. And I think, you know, discussions that we had last time at our training in February, there's going to be, you know, more protocols set in place where staff can update you all accordingly. there's going to be, you know, more protocols set in place where staff can update you all accordingly.
So for the Planning Board to be put on notice, just like the public, there needs to be a source for us to go to or, or to know to go to. In the past, with the particular referenced case, the Board of Adjustment' agenda was not available on the city website. So therefore, how could we be informed?
Hey, Mo, just because you know it off the top of your head, and, and I could fumble through it on. Can you articulate what notice requirements you have to go and do for every quasi judicial hearing?
Yes, you have to notify the property owner, if it is not the applicant, the adjacent property owners. You have to put a posting on the property itself stating what it is and when the hearing will take place. And then you also have to put a notice in the newspaper between 10 and 25 days, no less than 10 and no more than 25 days for two consecutive weeks.
And is it also posted on the website too?
It would be, yes.
Yeah. So I, I'm just giving it an example of how the public's put on notice of that. Anything else? Okay, so in terms of providing recommendations on rezonings and U D O text amendment, again, you all go and provide recommendations to the aldermen, and your main task is to go and make a recommendation of whether the proposed rezoning or text amendment is consistent or not with the city's U D O and land use plan for each of these reviews. Now, your review does not require a public hearing. It does require to be at a public meeting, but there's no state law that says you have to have a public hearing. But I think the general practice, correct me if I'm wrong, members of the, of the board that have been on the board and Mo, that you all typically hold a public hearing on, on rezonings and text amendments. And if I'm wrong, then let me know. The U D O requires you all to make a recommendation within 90 days, once it's first introduced. But I will say there's a shorter shot clock by statute that says that if no recommendation is provided to the Board of Aldermen within 30 days, then they can go and take it up without your recommendation.
And that's a May, right?
Yeah, it's a May. Now, if the U D Os, if the, if our U D O conformed with what state law said, then it would be a shorter time clock.
Thank you.
Yep. So you as a planning board, it's extremely important to remain objective, okay? And not to base your decision on personal preference. Now, I know I'm stating things that you all don't already know, but there are going to be projects, not only to you all, but the aldermen as well, that you all may not like. But the key is to, to have a narrow focus on what the issues are. Does the legislative decision, whether it's a rezoning, a conditional rezoning, or the text amendment, is it consistent with the city's future land use plan? Upon that review, you know, you're going to rely a lot on the materials presented in the staff report and by staff. Staff, again, does a lot of the legwork upfront. They're the ones speaking with the applicants. They're the ones that are really getting their hands dirty with, with each proposed, you know, rezoning or conditional zoning. So you should be comfortable relying on staff and their staff reports. And of course, reaching out to staff if you have questions, you know, whether it's before the meeting or at the meeting itself. So some things that are unique to Southport is you all review and make recommendations to the aldermen on the extent, location and design of all public structures and facilities, and acquiring and disposing of public property, and on the establishment of building lines. The U D O also gives you all the authority to make subcommittees in order to better address or study specific questions or problems. But just note that any sort of subcommittee cannot have more than three planning board members. I'll ask the first question to you all. Why can't we have more than three planning board members on a specific committee?
Is that a test question?
Well, I was just hoping that you guys are still awake. I'm just kidding. No.
Yeah, no, we are.
So, so why?
Yeah, I was going to say that's so we don't run afoul of the open meeting law and having it properly posted in advance.
Exactly, exactly right. Yep. So if you have a majority of the members, if you have a quorum, and if you're discussing city business, then that has to be a properly noticed meeting. So if you're doing a subcommittee, you know, three members, since you guys are a seven member board, that's okay. So you can do those, you know, discussions with just three without running afoul of the meetings law.
Brady, Brady, if I could, I do have, I do have a question on the second bullet under review and make recommendations of the Board of Aldermen. The extent, location, and design of all public structures and facilities. I believe they've gone over an R F P or an R F Q, I'm not quite sure, on the future police station. Should the planning board have a role in that design? It seems to me that what you're writing here is that we should have a role in that as well.
Yeah, I didn't write this. This comes from the U D O. So it says design, that would be my interpretation of it.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Now, I really want to get to sort of my, my last bullet on this. And again, I'll ask you all, so we can sort of talk a dialogue. When is it appropriate to start asking things from the applicant? Is it appropriate at any time?
Never. Yeah, that should go right through city staff. I would, I personally would never ask an applicant. I think it should all go through city staff. They coordinate it. They've got the, the legs to do it. So they'll be able, in the context, they'll be able to take care of those sort of things.
And, and that's an appropriate answer, but I don't think it always has to be the answer. Now, it also depends on sort of what, what decision making authority you all have. Let's take for an example, since you guys are going to start seeing a whole lot more as conditional zoning. Yeah, you're in an advisory board, but I also represent planning boards that have conditional zoning probably two or three times every meeting. And occasionally, they'll get to the point where they're liking the project because it's a site specific plan, you know, as part of the rezoning. So you get to see exactly what the use is, exactly what they're proposing. And usually when it's in terms of residential, it's some sort of residential development or some sort of mixed use development. You know, would it be appropriate to ask the applicant if they would be willing to add a condition to their proposal as a recommendation to the alderman? Would it be appropriate to at least ask that?
I don't see why not.
And the reason being is, is we have to have some buy-in from the applicant, but it never hurts to just ask, especially if it's something that is entirely reasonable. Because again, you're not the final decision maker, okay, number one. And number two, you know, it may be an important condition that you are, you know, recommending to the Board of Aldermen that maybe they not, have not otherwise thought about. Now, let's change the scenario. Let's say we're on major site plan. And, you know, I'm making it up, but let's pretend that major site plan approval doesn't require a traffic impact analysis, T I A, doesn't require an environmental study. Can we go and require the applicant to go and do that? That's an easy answer, no. We can't mandate if it's not otherwise required in the U D O. Can we bring it up and maybe see if they've been willing to go and do that? Yeah, you're running into a little bit of gray. But if the applicant is, if it's discussed and the applicant is willing to go and do that on their own initiative, that's completely fine. That's on them. They're going above and beyond to go and get their project approved. So I do say that, you know, in terms of conditional zoning, this may come up of proffering some conditions and seeing if the applicant will be agreeing to them, because conditional zoning is, is a negotiation and both have to be on board. But when it starts to come into other things like administrative decisions, where it's strictly of whether the project complies with the U D O, it's probably going to be less and less that we can go in. And number one, we cannot mandate anything, but probably less if we're going to go and ask for those things. And hopefully, a lot of this is vetted out, you know, with staff early on of concerns that they may have, which you guys will ultimately have, and those can get sorted out from the onset. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I, I have a question. So are you saying that a planning board member or even up to three members not being a quorum, it's okay to approach the applicant and, and talk to them and?
Nope.
Are you saying that?
No, I was saying the sub, you guys have the authority to make subcommittees, and that's a decision by the board as a whole on a specific issue. City members of the board might be able to give you an example of that. What you're asking is, is to discuss with the applicant behind the scenes. And I'll get to it in a, in a second, that the U D O says you cannot go and do that.
So you're talking about discussions between the Planning Board and, and the Planning Board meetings during their presentation?
Yeah, this would be, yeah, this would be at a public meeting. Or a public hearing, rather. Anything else? Okay, so that was a good segue. Oops, sorry. Again, this is all set forth in the U D O. You know, you're required to have faithful attendance at meetings. You cannot vote or participate where a conflict of interest exists. I'll get to that, I believe, on the next slide or two. Shall not discuss any case with any parties prior to the meeting on the case. You may receive or seek information from other planning board members or staff prior to the meetings. And the planning board members must publicly disclose any contact made by any party to a matter before the board. Shall not express individual opinions on any case with any parties prior to the Planning Board's decision on the matter. And a violation of that could be caused for dismissal. Okay, this is all set forth by the U D O.
Yeah, Brady, I think number four is one of the most important items. I know there's a lot of times that the public will ask us, what are our thoughts on a particular project that hasn't come before the board? And you just have to not, not give them an opinion because it shows that you're predisposed, and that's the worst thing you could possibly do.
Absolutely. And I'm glad this is in your, your all's U D O, because it makes it easier for you guys to follow the rules. If this is not in the U D O, you guys are a recommended body, just like the aldermen are. And putting aside, just generally speaking, I'm putting my developer hat on because I do represent developers in some cases. If it's a legislative decision and you don't have these parameters in place, there is nothing unlawful from an applicant or me representing an applicant to go and reach out to the Planning Board on a matter. You know, explaining the project to them or to the governing body. Now, quasi judicial is a completely different ballgame. That has to be completely closed doors because you're, you're acting as a court essentially. But I think this helps you all and be able to just say, I can't go and discuss the case, and you move on. Yep.
And that same thing would apply to the press reaching out to a member of the Planning Board, correct?
Ah, yeah, that would, yeah, you, correct, correct. Okay, so we briefly tucked, touched on this, you know, in terms of the open meetings law. Anytime that a quorum of the board meets to discuss city business has to be properly noticed, has to be, you know, you know, a public meeting. And for you all to go and be able to take any sort of action, whether that be a, a decision or an advisory decision, you must have a, a physical quorum present. And there are times that you all may have to go into closed session. Probably the most common would be attorney client privilege, where Ray, being your all's board attorney, would need to go and confer with you all to maintain that confidentiality. That's probably the most common time, although it is, in my experience, I haven't had to go into closed session very often with either my Board of Adjustments I represent or the Planning Board, but it does happen occasionally. So in terms of procedural, you know, if, if we don't have rules and procedure in place, and Mo, I believe we do not, and that's not uncommon, that planning boards or even Board of Adjustments for that matter to have their own rules of procedures. But then you, the de facto rule is what's called Robert's Rules of Order. So all proposals for action by the board must be made through an initial motion. I move that. And then you go, does anybody have a second? And there's a second. After there's a second, there's usually discussion before a decision is finally rendered. If there is a motion to amend, an initial motion, there has to be a second on the motion to amend before that can go and happen. Or I look to the person, this is what I usually advise with my boards, is I look to the person who made the motion and say, hey, well, would you go and revise your, your, your motion to have a friendly amendment? It's not a legal term, but it kind of helps sync, because a lot of times a motion will be made, and then there's more thought put into it and something has to go and be changed. So Mr. Chairman, he presides over the meetings, recognizes speakers, maintains quorums, and puts the motions to the vote and announces the results. Okay, in terms of when one would have to go and recuse? Absolutely. Sorry.
This is Doug. You mentioned we and rules of procedures. Were you talking about the Planning Board? I saw posted on the Southport website a rules of procedures date 2010.
Well, great. Yeah, that's why I said, correct me if I'm wrong, no one corrected me. So my apologies. You guys do have rules of procedures. And hopefully, Mo or staff can go and get you guys a copy of that if you don't have one already. Anything else? Okay, in terms of when one would have to go and recuse themselves and not participate, really involves two main things, whether you're tied to money, you have some financial impact on the board member in terms of what's coming in front of you all, or you have some sort of relationship with the applicant or the property owner. And it's, it's basically everything short of being someone's cousin, you know, whether it's a parent, grandparent, half sibling, sibling, that type of thing. It's all spelled out in the statute of the times that, that one would have to go and recuse themselves. You need to go and disclose your recusal at, either at the beginning of the meeting or at the beginning of the particular agenda item. It doesn't happen often, but if someone says that they don't, otherwise don't have a conflict and the rest of the board thinks otherwise, they can vote on that and majority vote to go and recuse that member, can, can be put to an ultimate vote. And if it passes, then that member would have to go and recuse themselves. So occasionally, you all may do site visits, and that's okay. But make sure that, to the extent that you can do them individually, just to not run afoul of the open meetings law. And just, I mean, this is common sense, but not going on to private property without the property owner's consent. So if you want to go and drive by, that's fine. Stand on the sidewalk, look at the property, that's fine too. And keep in mind too, that when you sit as the Planning Board and you are discussing public business as it pertains to the Planning Board, any email that is sent or received, it doesn't matter where it's coming from, whether it's your private account or an account specifically to the Planning Board, most likely that is a matter of public record, or you should go and assume that it is so, okay? It's based on the content of the record, not the form in which it was sent or received. And that is pretty much my presentation. And I know that was a lot. Again, some of it was given to you all and some members of the board not that long ago. So it really was a review, and some of you might be hearing this for the first time. But happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Floor is open. Somebody stumped the attorney.
I hope I didn't bore you all too much, but I was, I think I'm within my 45 minute timeframe. Because after that, I, I've done enough of these to know that after 45 minutes to an hour, we just naturally lose interest in anything, so.
So Brady, if outside of this meeting, if people have questions, they would funnel them through staff, I assume?
Yeah, and they can just get up with me. Absolutely. I was just going to go and say that. You can relay it through Mo, Tori, just city staff, and, and, and they'll get it to me, and I can get up with you guys.
Great, thank you. Any, any questions at all, once, twice, three times? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hey, thank you all. Thank you for accommodating me and, and welcome new planning board members and Mr. Chairman. Appreciate y'all's service to, to the city.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Brady. Thank you all. Have a good evening. Thanks.
That everybody is well-trained. And it's always open. If you have questions at all, reach out to city staff. And that's what they're there for, is to keep us, keep us straight, even though I can't see her, she's hiding behind the podium back there. But Mo will answer all your questions. Wendell will answer your questions. So always feel free to email them and ask away. Rather do this right. Under, let's see, other business, Planning Services Director Updates. Mo, you're up.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair Ashley. Wendell is under the weather, so he had to leave early, so I'm going to be taking care of both reports this evening.
We appreciate him leaving if he was under the weather.
Yes. So, so for his development side, some of the permitting today, we did have a TRC meeting with the development team behind the homes-to-suites hotel proposal that is coming for, forward. It's a 103-room hotel, which is in the Dutchman Village subdivision area. It's a highway commercial zoning district. So we've met today. We're, we're going to get their comments back to them from the Brunswick County chimed in. They have their TIA. Their TIA was already approved by NC DOT, so they were not part of that conversation. And we will expect to have their new submittal back for the September planning board, but they're trying to make it to the August. But we'll see if they can get it submitted back to us in time to be able to review it with enough time for staff. Further, the UDO Text Amendment Committee met last week. We're working hard on Table 3.1 of the UDO. That's the table of uses and the standards associated with that. So we are going to be meeting the beginning of August to kind of clean up any loose ends and have that to you for your August planning board meeting as well. And we are also trying to get out in the community. We, Wendell has been going to the farmer's markets on Wednesday. Just if there's any information that if we have some meetings coming up or any surveys available that way, just kind of have a friendly face and get our names out there, our faces out there. So a little different approach so that it's not always behind a podium or a desk so that we can be put, you know, a face with the name as well.
Great idea.
Yeah, thank you. So also, some of the things that we're working on, the planning board made a recommendation to the Board of Aldermen for the stormwater ordinance. That's Article Six of the UDO. We are going to be taking that to the August Board of Aldermen meeting for a public hearing. So I wanted to keep that on the forefront. We didn't want to have a conflict, or not a conflict, but there were two big public hearings that had to come forward. The local historic district overlay had their public hearing at the July 10th Board of Aldermen meeting. So we wanted to make sure that they each had their own meeting to get the comments that we really needed to have for those. In relationship to the historic district overlay, the Historic Preservation Commission is going to hold a special meeting on Monday, July 28. It'll be at 2:00 PM at the Indian Trail Meeting Hall to discuss the comments that were received at the public hearing so that they, that we can take some thoughts back to the Board of Aldermen prior to the next meeting in August for their meeting. The Board of Adjustment is meeting on Tuesday, July 22 at 4:30 at the Indian Trail Meeting Hall. The only case on this agenda is an appeal of the determination of a code enforcement officer for property located on and adjacent to 416 East Bay Street. And you'll see that that property has been posted. You'll see it as you drive down the street. Some more planning fun things. We've got the Southeastern North Carolina Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan is being updated. So this is regional. So we're looking at Pender, New Hanover, and Brunswick County are part of this plan. I put a flyer at your seat. It has a QR code. There is a public survey that is available. We are asking everyone to please go fill out the survey. This will help us with mitigation and resiliency as we move forward. And these plans at the regional level, then we get to use for projects at our local level as well. So it helps with grant writing. And we want to really make sure that we know that there's a lot of flooding and a lot of storms and a lot of changes happening. So we want to make sure that we are as prepared as possible moving forward. Also, that link will be added to our website. I just asked Cheyenne to include that today so that anyone in the public can also find this link and take the survey as well. We are also working on our multimodal transportation plan. This is an accelerated plan, and it is moving forward. So it is not as robust as a full transportation plan. This is where we are working, and it's, it's a fast pace, a nine to 12 month, month process, so that they're going to be able to provide input on ground, on the ground level projects, so that we can then again move forward with grants and finding funding for these projects. So it's, it's going to be much more construction-ready kind of types of projects than more of your big picture projects that you see a lot of times in those. We are going to be having some public input and surveys for that coming up, and those will be taking place in the early fall. And I'm going to keep everyone up to date on those. And we will be advertising those for the community itself. So we want to try to get as many people out as possible to give us some information on where we need to get some transportation pedestrians. So this is all pedestrian bike multimodal types of projects. So we'll be working on those. I mentioned earlier about the comprehensive plan. We have received that, the comments back from DCM, and I will be bringing that forward for your recommendations. So 160D does require that prior to the Board of Aldermen making their final decision and adoption of that plan, that the planning board make a recommendation to them for that. So those are kind of our big ones. The legislature is adjourned until at least the end of July, so I don't have any legislative updates for you. But I will keep you up to date if there's anything that happens that will be impacting the city. So that is my report for this evening. And if you have any questions, please let me know. And please feel free to reach out to me if you have any other questions further.
No, Mo, I just want to say thank you. We just met with the text committee, and there were a lot of amendments to be made and changes. And so thank you for doing that so promptly, so it's available for our August meeting. It's greatly appreciated.
Well, after all this work that you've done this week, what are you guys doing next week? This is quite a bit of work. Thank you for the update. Appreciate it. Any questions from the board on that? Fred?
Mo, I have a question. This is sort of outside of our realm, but you touched upon it with the pedestrian plan. The bridges on Highway 211 with the NC DOT, when I drive by those, that looks mighty narrow for a pedestrian to safely pass. And I just did some cursory checking, and it looks like it's sort of like a four-foot minimum. And I'm sure there's exceptions for the kinds of bridges and that kind of thing. Do you know anything about that?
I don't know specifics for the bridges themselves. I know that there will be a pedestrian and bike component to that project, but it is not part of this construction. So that's not part of this project. So I don't know. But I can inquire.
Yeah, so it's just a curiosity. But my observation, going by at 45 miles an hour, it's hard to evaluate. Is that shoulder as wide as a sheet of plywood? Because it just looks mighty narrow. And I know that maybe the lines are not final kind of thing. But it makes me wonder. I would have second thoughts about being a pedestrian and walking across that. And I know that if it wasn't engineering error, for example, it's kind of too late to change that. But just curious.
Is that something you need to get back to Fred on? I can't see him, Mo. That, Mo, I want to make sure, is that something you have to get back to Fred on?
I'm happy to, you know, bring that back to you, no problem.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions? And that includes the update from Wendell as well, correct? Thank you. Into the announcements portion, I'm going to go around the table first, starting down the end. Bob, anything? John? Fred? Skipping over you, we're going to go down to, let's see, Maria?
Thank you for the well wishes and the greetings today.
Yeah, welcome aboard. Doug? Ed? Okay, I'm going to open it up. Liaisons, anything for us tonight? Either way, okay.
Welcome into the new members.
And this is just the beginning. Yeah, thank you. I'll turn it over to Kevin.
See us from here?
See from the back side, in that case.
Who do you want you on camera?
At this time, because of your commitment, knowledge, education, and tolerance, especially tolerance with putting up with all of us over the last years, and accepting a member that has an accent I haven't quite figured out yet. I won't mention any names. But that being said, the board, everyone here from, I'm sure, the old board and the newest esteemed members that we have, the first is an appreciation for your term. From the time you've been on the planning board, you've been a chairman pretty much. And so we give you this to show our appreciation of what you've done.
I'll be right back. Thanks.
On this one, this is a new one. And this one, this award is based on unique leadership and what she has done, showing us how a meeting should be conducted, the research we should do, how we should be outspoken when we're defending the planning board. You have done that so well. And I can say, in 40 years of advocacy, I haven't been anyone better. I'm glad I have to go up against you and Corbin.
Thank you.
But for the first time, we are going to award to you the Advocacy Award in recognition of your influential and dedicated advocacy as a member and chairman of the Southport Planning Board.
Goodness. Oh, it's so nice. Perry, can I ask, would you make sure that we get a picture of our old, oh, I'm sorry, y'all. Yeah, our old planning board, and then we'll get our new members in, too. I'd like everybody to be in there.
Thank you, Kevin. Anything else for the board? All right, just closing out, one of the things that was mentioning, mentioned was the rules of procedure. So I went through a couple of, actually about half a dozen cities, knowing that we needed to update hours, you know. And there's something liaisons, if they're like it. So what I did is I went through different cities and other communities, just small towns across North Carolina to take a look at establishing an updated rules of procedure. And this is really just a guiding document that has to, has, needs to match our UDO. And if you look in about three different places, it says draft. So if it doesn't match the UDO, just remember, we've got some work to do on us. What I'd like to do is somewhere during the month of August is have a working session. I'll check with Noah on what's required to do that. And I'd like to do it Indian Trail, so we can actually have a good dialogue all the way around. Won't take any votes because it's going to be a working session, but to help go through this document, see what changes we need to make to it, as well as, as perhaps to our UDO as well, you know, to see if there's some things in here that other cities are doing that might benefit us. But this is really just so that we know what, what the planning, what the planning board does, what the votes, a lot of the things that Brady talked about, it just condenses a lot of the UDO into the rules of procedure itself. So, and we'll do that, plan on doing that in August. Sometime, I'll, I'll reach out, see what we need to do with the city manager first, because I know we have a requirement to telecast all the meetings that are special or regular meetings. I'm not sure about working meetings. I don't think that was in the resolution, particularly where there are no deliberations or votes that are going to be taken place. So also in August, we'll start looking at moving some members around with the different subcommittees that we'll have coming up, including the text amendment committees, items like that. So we'll, we'll make sure that everybody's included on those and has a, has a role as well. So anything else before the board at all? Here and none, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn. Motion been made? Do we have a second? Motion been made, a second. Thank you, Maria. Good night, Southport. We're adjourned.